Work session.
I believe so.
All right.
Okay, everyone, I'm sure others will join us. Welcome to the County Council Caucus before our meeting on Monday, May 18th. Just have to go through, see who's here right now. For the record, Councilman Conti, Hoey Flynn, Ballerin, O'Brien, Farrell, Igo, Love, and I think that's Anani at the bottom, as well as Council President Ellis. Right, okay, thus far. Uh, and Brad, Corporation Council. Brett Williams, sorry about that, Brett.
That's all right.
Okay. And Councilmember Johnson has also joined us. Okay, so going into the agenda. For approval of meetings minutes, our May 4 meeting minutes are ready for moving. So I'll offer those. Any questions, comments about those? No? Okay, down to consideration of vetoes from there, and I'm just going off the front of the agenda. I'll make the motion for the ordinance 33121, the MC. I'll make the motion to reconsider that.
Before you do that, don't we have a local law?
Yes, F.
Yep.
Held.
Oh, okay.
Frederick.
Yes, the way I do this is kind of wacky, so excuse me. I, when I flip the page, I start on the local laws, but you're right, I should do it as I go down. It's local law A of, excuse me, local law F of 2020 by Ms. Frederick. That went to finance, I believe it passed with a positive recommendation.
Yes, it did.
Okay, so we will be moving that. And then move on to consideration of vetoes, and then I'll make the motion to move to reconsider ordinance 33121, the MC, and ask for a vote on that. Any questions or comments? I mean, we've talked about this quite enough, so I think we should be set with that, all right? So, and then on from there. Go ahead, Mr. Galloway.
Motion would be to reconsider.
Reconsider. Reconsider ordinance 33121, and ask for a roll call vote thereon. Motion not changed, you.
I don't know, I mean, I think to move for the adoption of the ordinance notwithstanding objections of the mayor.
Okay, so then my language would have to be clearer in saying.
The language I provided to is what I got from previous meeting minutes.
Right, and that was the, that one way, and the others, I move to override.
Yeah.
The mayor, the mayor veto of ordinance. Does that, that sound better to you, Mr. Conti? Move to override?
Whatever, as long as we know what we're doing.
Right, it accomplishes the same one.
Yeah, I mean, in the assembly, I know what we've done in the past, it's been to not withstand the objections, but whatever works.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I think Councilmember Hoey has his hand up.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I had a fast question on the Zoom chat. It doesn't seem to work, is that something we're not going to be able to use anymore?
The Zoom chat, were you sending a specific message?
Yeah, it just popped up now.
Yeah, I just, they have to enable it, you have to enable it.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, also, I'd like to add, for the record, Councilmember Doche, Fahey, Frederick, and Robinson are also with us. Did I miss anyone? No, okay. Okay, then on to reports of standing committees, we'll go through that. We went through local laws already, under ordinances held. Number nine by Ms. Love, for 4120. That went through finance, and I believe it came out with a positive recommendation, so we'll move that. Okay? And so that'll move, or will be offered. Next, number 10 on the agenda by Ms. Love also, that's 54120, sale of the property down of Van Trump to 39 Columbia Street Association LLC. I know there was some, we had some further discussion on that. Mister, well, first off, it passed the Finance Committee with a positive recommendation, correct, Ms. Farrell?
It did. That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then Mr. Anani, you wanted to add or offer some comments? I know you sent stuff out to council members, but.
Well, thank you. I generally just had some concerns as relates to the appraisal, particularly the price, and also looking at how the appraiser arrived at 25,000. Over the past couple of weeks, there's been questions that have not been answered as related to this appraisal. And I think that it's important that we do our due diligence as a body, looking at the financial constraints that we are in currently. You know, it's no secret, we, there's going to be some cuts that we have to make as relates to staff all across the city. There's no secret that we're probably, we're $20 million in lost revenue in the coming months. And I just want to make sure that whatever decision that we make as relates to any sale, that we're actually interrogating it. Because this is, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect taxpayer dollars. So I was just had some concerns as relates to some questions that I would have loved to ask the appraiser. I would have loved to get more interpretation from Corporation Council on how they arrived at the 25,000 number. So that was just my general concerns that I had, and I just wish that we could have, we could hold on this and get further information from the appraiser or even Corporation Council.
I'm happy to address.
Hold on one second. I'm allowed Ms. Love to speak as it's in her area?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Kelly. When I met with Corporate Counsel and Dave Gatlin back before this pandemic hit, I was more than satisfied as they explained to me that we got market rate for this. Wusu fails to understand that, and I tried to explain it to you guys last, her last week. Redburn owned 99.9% of that land already, that parking lot already. It's a small patch that is, that the city owned. And the patch is just a piece of grass, a small amount of grass with some gravel, and Redburn has been keeping it mold and, you know, all the debris around it. So again, we got fair market value for this, and I'm, and I'm more than satisfied, and I'm going to ask for his passes.
Okay, so you support, okay, thank you, Ms. Farrell.
I guess, just from a process and procedure perspective, we had a council meeting, we just had a Finance Committee meeting on this, and I agree, it is incredibly important to, for council members to ask questions, to bring things up, to go, you know, get into it, and that's why we have committee meetings, and that's why we have caucus. So those are the opportunities to bring those up, and I'm curious why you didn't bring those questions up at the meeting when we had it and people were asking questions. And/or even, you know, this has been around for quite some time, so I think it's, I mean, again, I want us to get all the money we can, I think that's great. I just, in terms of process and procedures, we, it's important that we actually utilize our process and procedures and utilize our committee meetings, that's why they're there. So is there any reason that you didn't ask these questions then?
Quite frankly, I think Judy Doche did ask those questions in the past, and those answered, those questions were not answered. As relates to why those questions from myself was, I did ask our Corporation, our Legislative Council for more details as relates to the process. He said he would get more information to me. And now we are coming to vote upon it. So I think that just moving forward, there are several times where several colleagues asked questions as relates to this sale, and those informations was not given, I don't know why. But again, I have some concerns as it relates to the, in light of the information that we have received from the mayor's office. We are broke, we don't have money, and we have to make sure that every sale that we're making is in the best interest of taxpayers. Because again, we could be on the side talking about, well, we're willing to take budget cuts, we're willing to do this to keep the staff, we're willing to do this to keep the staffer. But then, we're given, we're making sales, and it's not, it doesn't seem like we're doing our due diligence as relates to interrogating how Corporation Council came up with 25,000, or how the appraiser came up with $25,000. So again, if this was before COVID, I would have been more than happy, but looking at our finance as a city, we are broke, we don't have the money. And I think that we have to do our due diligence as relates to this sale, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anani. I would say there is an appraisal in the pack, that there was one done in.
Yes. Yes.
David, Mr. Galloway, earlier he said they stand by the appraisal in the email that he sent us earlier. So there was an analysis done, it's not like there wasn't one, and there were some comparables in there also. This, Mr. Brett, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have on the appraisal. And just as a bit of background, I do handle the tax, or she, the property tax challenge matters for the city. And in my previous life as a private practice attorney, I did that as well, and handled real estate appraisals on a regular basis. So from an appraisal practice standpoint, I don't see any issues with the appraisal that's been put before the council. I think it was done in a sound manner. The appraiser made adjustments to her comparables, which is all standard appraisal practice, all part of the USE PAP, which is the code that appraisers have to abide by. I think in emails, the concept of highest and best use was explained, that that should take into account the future use of the property. And the appraiser did account for the highest and best use of the property. And one thing to keep in mind is that the value of the property is the value of the property. It's not going to be dependent on COVID necessarily. So just because the value was arrived at before COVID doesn't mean that the value of the property has changed because of COVID. And the city's going to have to sell the property at what it will fetch on a fair and open market. And I don't think COVID will necessarily change that calculation. So although the city is going to be more strapped for cash at this point, that doesn't necessarily change the fair market value of the property itself. So, and again, if you have any specific questions, I'd answer those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballerin, and then Ms. Doche, and then we're going to move on.
I had, I had one comment and one question. I think it's our duty, whether we are, you know, in a difficult financial situation, or we have an abundance of wealth. It is our responsibility to make sure we get the best price for our taxpayers, no matter what our circumstances are. So, you know, that's our, that's our responsibility. My question for Brad is, do we work with a specific agency that, that a specific appraiser, or are we going by whatever appraiser the purchaser is buying? And if that's the case, should be shifted over to having our own appraiser? Because, you know, this isn't the first time the property price has come up on a different property over the last few months. So I think it's important for us to clearly understand and be able to trust whatever's coming to us so that, you know, this, this comfort level, whatever purchases and sells are, we're optimizing.
Certainly, and in this situation, obviously, the city did not hire the appraiser. In situations where the city does have to hire an appraiser, for example, in a property tax challenge case, when we have to prove our assessment of a property, we do have to hire appraisers in those situations. And I don't think we have a specific, in fact, I know we don't have a specific appraiser that we always use, we do shop that around. We have some appraisers that we prefer to use over others, but we don't necessarily use the same appraiser every time with regard to whether we want to provide a counter appraisal. Sorry, I have the fire truck going off in the background, so I apologize if there's any background noise. But that's a consideration. Sorry, that's a consideration the council will have to think about with regard to money. Because if the city is going to be hiring its own appraiser for every sale of a property, that's going to be a few thousand dollars every time. So that's, that's just something taken.
But you can hire an appraiser and have to sell a pay. You know, when you go and buy a property, your bank is making you get an appraisal. It's not, you don't have a choice in the matter. So you, the buyer is paying for the appraisal to make sure that it, the appraisal adds a value that the bank's going to put a mortgage on it. So it's not outside the real estate business, you know, you know, sector for it to be a structure where the buyer is paying for the appraisal. While the, while the bank is selecting, or the seller is selecting the appraised company.
Sure, and I suppose that's a practice we could look into going forward, that's not the case here. But perhaps it could be arranged like that in the future.
Can we get like?
Okay, Mr. Mr. Anani, please.
Sorry.
Ms. Doche? You're muted. Still.
I, I should have looked again at my notes on, you know, what I found with regard to the assessed value, land value of properties in that area. I did mention it, but I, you know, it was really Wusu calling me and asking me questions about it after he took a look at it, that I took another look at this situation. I had raised those questions in caucus, and I had anticipated that there would be a, you know, somebody to, you know, the appraiser or somebody to talk about it at committee. Because when I you raise that and suggested that we would want to get further clarification on this appraisal, you know, I, I thought that there would be a more robust discussion in, in the committee. And, you know, frankly, sometimes I feel like I'm raising issues, and they're kind of, you know, dismissed, and I then try to figure out, you know, pick my battles carefully. So Wusu, you know, has raised the questions, and so I have provided people with the information that I had provided at caucus again. With regard to, there's a whole issue here. I mean, first of all, with regard to the assessed value of all the properties around it, it would make this property be worth about $60,000. If, if we use the across the fence, using our own assessment, the cross the fence basically says your, whatever land is nearby, whatever parcel you're buying is essentially going to be worth essentially the, at least the equivalent of other properties right around it. And again, I want to note that I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the improved value, the value of the buildings around it, I'm talking about the land value, assessed value, and again, it comes out to $60,000. The appraisal report, so, you know, I've asked the question of David in this exchange this afternoon regarding, you know, why was there this discount? So on the one hand, and Brett, maybe you can answer this question for me. On the one hand, they're saying that there's a discount because it's a smaller piece of property. On the other hand, they're saying you use the across the fence value. And again, I'm going to read from the appraiser, the across the fence approach is based upon the premise that the corridor land should be worth at least as much as the land through which it passes. So you look at the adjoining lands and you, you know, across the fence, and you say, oh, those are all worth, you know, this amount of money. So, and in this particular case, you know, I provided you with what is assessed, there's no recent purchases right in that area, at least not that the appraiser used. What the appraiser did use in the area was appraised higher. So I don't know why, again, if you're looking at a sliver and you're using the across the fence value that says you're supposed to be using, it should be worth at least as much as the land through which it passes, why the explanation I get back regarding the discount, which the appraiser doesn't explain, how she arrives at the exact percentage that she has discounted this at. But, but you're not supposed to basically be discounting it because it's only a sliver according to the across the fence valuation. So Brett, do you have the answer?
Well, as far as adjustments go, I mean, that's very, very, very standard appraisal practice. And that's done to take into account the differences between parcels of land. And backing up, I should mention as well that looking at the assessments can be some indication of value, but at least as far as a court is concerned, an assessment is not a solid or conclusive indicator of value. So, you know, you have to take an assessment, an assessed value, as, as good a job as I know Mr. Kingston does, you have to take an assessed value, grain of salt with regard to valuation. And as I said, adjustments are made in every single appraisal that's ever performed essentially to account for the differences in the property, the size of the parcel, the neighborhood that the parcels are in. So, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the.
But she doesn't, can you tell me where she in her appraisal specifically tells us how she arrived at a 50% reduction or more?
I don't know that she does necessarily, but that's not, and I apologize if this is not the answer you want to hear, but it's not uncommon, and in fact, I think it would be more uncommon for an appraiser to lay out in its, in his or her report the exact reasons and the exact calculations that they arrived at to get to particular percentage, percentage adjustments. Those are, to a degree, always going to be somewhat subjective, that's, that's just part of how appraisers practice their craft, I guess, is based on their experience and things like that, so.
So one, one of the pieces of property that is mentioned, the smallest lot, is an overgrown, unimproved lot that is four tenths of an acre.
That's a comparable sale for, I think?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I did not print out the entire appraisal report, just.
It's so, not meaning to interrupt, at the risk of having another Finance Committee meeting that we already had, just by a show of hands with members, if you're okay with moving forward with this, just say so, otherwise we'll hold it for further discussion. Those that are against moving forward with it. I see two hands. So, okay, we're going to, we're going to bring it up for a vote, we'll move it, or, excuse me, we'll vote on it. Again, we got to get more into these conversations during our caucus, our other caucus and our finance or committee meetings. That's what those meetings are for. We should have had this conversation already, in depth and to the detail that we're having right now. Okay, so that was 10 on the ordinance as hell. Next, we're on to resolutions introduced, Mr. Anani. Your 455220 are on the COVID designation. We agree, we're going to introduce this and hold it for further discussion or clarification, right?
That's right.
So that'll be intro. Moving on to resolutions held. Number nine from Ms. Farrell, Finance is 294120. That was also finance and moved forward with a positive recommendation.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be voting on that also. That is it for the agenda, any? Got a couple of minutes left, any questions, comments? Complaints? All right, Mr. Conti?
Sorry, if we're off the agenda, a quick question, and I know we're having a public safety meeting on Wednesday, I believe. Past two nights, there's been like fireworks in my area going off regularly at the same time, and I've wondered if anyone else has been experiencing that.
It looks like Mr. Ballerin has got his hand up. I've had a few out here in the north end of the city also.
So I, I guess I had one go off recently. I'm wondering what the noise was, it didn't occur to me that was fireworks.
It's not true.
One.
Explosives, not, not flashing pyrotechnics, but fireworks in terms of, you know, things going off for a prolonged period steadily, and it seems to be the same time every night. And I don't know if it's a. Ooh, I have to check, when I hear tonight, it's probably eightish or so, it's, it's in the evening.
It is getting close to that time of year, this is usually starting occurring, not that it's okay, but, you know, we can bring that up at the Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, it's one of those quality of life issues.
So we'll add that to the topic of discussion. So with that, any other comments? Mr. She?
Yeah, I just want to let people know that my ordinance extending the suspension of the green roof incentive, I'm hoping that maybe we can act on that at the next meeting. I do need to amend it because there was a renumbering issue. And I thought that we were going to have that tidied up today, but we're still working on it. And so I just want to let, give people a heads up that I will likely be looking to amend that. And Ms. Fahey, I would like us to have a planning committee meeting on it after the 26th, which is when the Planning Board is expected to act on it favorably.
Okay, we'll get that scheduled.
There's also a public, public hearing requirement.
What was that?
There's also a public hearing, hearing requirement.
And can we do it the night that we adopt it?
Yes. And Mr. She, I sent you an email, though, the updates that we sent you are fine, and I spoke with Corporation Council, and they're fine. It fixed all the issues.
Thank you. Oh, Richard? It's, it's, it's a local law that I can't amend at the same meeting, right? I can, I can amend it.
Correct, this is an ordinance, yes, you can demand the same meeting in passing.
Okay, with that, let's move on. Mr. President, I'll defer to you on the, on the pledge, last time.
Okay, thank you.
So whatever you say is what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're shifting into Albany Common Council meeting for Monday, May 18th, 2020. Can the clerk please call the roll? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Forgive me, I'm having a slight technical difficulty. Anani?
Present.
Ballerin?
Yeah.
Conti?
Here.
Dushet?
Here.
Fahey?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Frederick?
Here.
Howie?
Here, online.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Johnson?
Here.
Kimbra?
Here.
Love?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
And if I could go back to O'Brien, I did see him, okay?
And Igo's here as well.
Fifteen members present, no one is absent.
Thank you. And Mr. President, Pro Tem, Mr. Kimbra, can you, can you do the pledge allegiance for us tonight? Again, thanks.
All right.
That was a good one, good one.
All right.
And after that, we'll have a moment of silence as well.
Step out of view. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United.
The United States of America.
Of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to our public comment period. Madam Clerk, is there, the people who submitted public comment for tonight, is any one of them online in the queue or not?
Yes, we do have people that are online in the queue. I believe Vincent Raguso, but he submitted his public comment a little bit afterwards. I tried to organize them in the order in which they were received, but if you would like me to move outside of order.
Well, what I would like, yeah, I think what we should do from now on with public comment, if somebody is going to be online, we should just let them speak rather than writing in their comment, you know, if they, if they're online, if they're going to be on, I would prefer that, if that's possible.
Okay, I'm sorry, bear with me one second, we'll get him admitted into the room so that he may share his comments, okay?
Thank you, thank you. If he choose do so, if he just wanted Brett, that's fine as well.
He's in right now.
Mr. Raguso, are you here with us? Mr. Raguso, are you on the line with us?
So, Mr. President, am I on?
Yes, you are, sir.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Someone might be playing this online in the background, they should turn it down.
Him as well, he's listening to it in the background as well.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Russo, you have to turn down your volume or you'll hear us in a delayed response. Yes, I can.
Okay. President of the Common Council, Koryelich, members of the council, first and foremost.
Is he playing this online in the background, they should turn it down?
How's, how's that?
Good, go ahead, Mr. Raguso.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. Russo.
Can anybody hear me?
Madam Clerk, I guess he can't hear us.
Can you hear me? I can pull his comment up so that we have it, so that you're able to see it.
Yes, please do.
Yes.
He has some technical difficulties. Yes, I can, Mr. Russo. It's delayed for some reason.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
We'll just move on. Can you read his comments, Danielle, please?
I sure will, bear with me one second.
Sorry about that, thank you.
No, no problem.
All right. Bear with me one second. So Vincent Raguso, I have his comments, he's of 13 Beach Ave, Albany, New York, and he shares the following with the Common Council. First and foremost, I am glad that the program CCA mega utility are on hold. I personally felt that there was a lot of false information on how they were going to sell their utility, mainly electricity to the residents of Albany. National grid price for natural gas was so low that after reviewing the price structure of national grid for natural gas, CCA came to realize it was not economically feasible for them at this time to go forward with the program. Just side note, natural gas will go lower as we are discussing this now. This program was only an opt-out program, thus knowing that I knew it was not meant for the residents of Albany. CCA over the next few months will continue public education, including webinars for all interested residents to learn more about CCA. Why waste our time when natural gas prices go cheaper than national grid? Then educate Albany residents. This was another program coming out of the Planning Department, which was a flop. First, the being the USDO, which many council members are also dissatisfied with. Planning Department was invited many times to the council to explain the many problems that the members had. It was a no-show on the Planning Department part. We never got a public meeting from the Planning Department to rectify some of the problems that were in the USDO. Here we are, still not satisfied with the program, another flop of the Planning Department. The USDO took so much power away from the council, it is important that you come together and vote for Tom Howie amendment to the USDO. It would be a start to regain some of the power the council should have. This is not only for the 15th ward, it is for all the wards. It will give the council a voice as what should be in their ward. Mike O'Brien legislation is very important, and I hope this council again come together and override the veto. The mayor vetoed this legislation twice. It is not meant for the area on Central Ave and is not meant for the residential area or shopping mall. Pick another spot. To think the Planning Department classified the Plasma Center as light manufacturing. Now really, the Planning Department must think Albany residents are stupid, another flop. Meaning of light manufacturing from the dictionary, light manufacturing. Light manufacturing is defined as a light industrial business where all processing, fabrication, assembly, or disassembly of items take places wholly within an enclosed building. Typical items for processing, fabricating, assembly, or disassembly include but are not limited to apparel, home accessories, food, drapes, clothing, accessories, bedspreads, decorations, artificial plants, jewelry, instruments, computers, and electronic devices. After reading this meaning, nowhere does it say blood plasma center. I'm totally against changing a plasma center to light manufacturing. I know the mayor put on hold the layoffs until we know where the three trillion stimulus packages money is going and who is getting what. She also give up her pay for the remainder of the year, but the layoffs are a very important issue. Many livelihoods depends on a job, and this is not the time to lay off anyone. If by chance a layoff has to come, it should be across the board, from the mayor's staff to the workers. The Common Council should have the information of layoffs if in the event it happens. And those comments were provided by Vincent Raguso, 13 Beach Ave, Albany, New York.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please read the next common, public comment?
The next comment is submitted on behalf of John D. Wright, who is an attorney, and his comment reads as follow. Dear Common Council members, attached for your review and consideration is a letter and related documents concerning ordinance 3.31.20, MC is amended. We are respectfully urging you to vote against overriding the mayor's veto of this ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration. The attachments and the letter were sent under separate cover to all council members.
Thank you. The next one?
The next one is from Marlin Anderson. His comments read as follow. General, as we move forward into the new reality, we in Albany are faced with the same old challenges. For months, I warned of just such a situation, and now, as I warned, the well has ran dry. The state can't save us, and as we face that economic reality, it will take innovative and solid leadership to change the dynamic that has gotten us to this pass. The administration has had eight years to make change. Indeed, it was brought into office to do just that and has failed to do so. And now, in the face of that failure, it is time for City Hall, Council, and Mayor to seriously address the economic reality of the city of Albany, because we cannot survive with our current economic posture, and we cannot go forward with our current economic structure. Those comments were provided by Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
The next comments, I'm so sorry, sir, to cut you off.
No problem, go ahead.
Are provided by Alana Klein, and they read as follows, bear with me one second. Alana's comments read as follows. Plasma Center COVID-19, Mr. President and members of the council, I'd like to first and foremost say that I hope you are all staying safe in these trying times. I'd also like to give a shout out to our city clerk for the effort put forth in making it easier to submit comments. She even personally emailed me asking for my thoughts, and that meant a lot to me. Somewhat on that note, I have been absent for a while because of what I have called rehab 2.0. Anyways, I'm back to commenting, and I look forward to a time when I can once again attend meetings. To this point, I have been essentially quiet on the issues regarding the plasma facility. I believe that some truly good medical therapies can be extracted from the process, although I do understand the concerns about the potential for predatory business practices. However, it has come to my attention that plasma can be used in therapies to come up with possible cures and vaccinations for COVID-19. This being the case, I can no longer stay silent. As I said, I truly understand some of your points of opposition. If you know something else about me, I hope you know that I advocate for both communities of color and economically disadvantaged communities. That being said, this whole process, especially taking COVID-19 into account, feels to me as if you are doing the wrong thing for the right reasons. It is my understanding that the building would be located in or near the Hannaford Plaza on Central Avenue. This is uptown and in a commercial strip. I also understand the concerns about making sure they are ethical about the frequency of accepting contributions, ETC. However, I think that the key to that is through enforcement by the county state department of health. I believe that the potential benefits of what could be provided by plasma are worthwhile, and I would respectfully ask that you reconsider your position should a similar or related, related vote present itself in the future. I realize that this was twice over a unanimous vote, and nothing is on the agenda for tonight. I do recognize that this means that I'm breaking ranks, so to speak, with those of whom I even seem to agree with 100% of the time. However, I hope that if any of you would like to talk to me about this more in depth, you will reach out to me via email or social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comments?
There are additional comments. The next comment is from Max. And it reads as follows. Max Randolph of 103 Sherman Street. And it reads as follows. I had the distinct pleasure of finding the bronze flower vase stolen from my mother's grave upon visiting on Mother's Day to place flowers on her grave and my aunt's grave. I came upon a couple of remedies to stop this kind of theft and asked Graceland Cemetery if they would be interested. It's been a week so far and have no answer. The remedy can be paid without using taxpayer dollars. I also have additional comments. This one is from Katina Mavodnas of Melrose Place. Thank you for allowing me to speak once more on this issue. Since the last legislative meeting on this issue, the FDA issued new guidance on May 1st, 2020 for the collection of COVID convalescent plasma. The plasma has to be collected from a FDA facility authorized to collect COVID convalescent plasma. When you search the FDA's database for approved facility CSL Plasma Albany does not come up in any variation or spelling of their name. Also, for further clarification, please see the national, I'm sorry, the regional listings cited on the National COVID-19 Convalescent Plasma Project's website at www.ccp19.org. So for CSL Plasma Albany to claim they would be of help fighting the pandemic is rather disingenuous. Moreover, it is very important that these private plasma centers be located to, closer to emergency facilities since their clients can experience serious medical issues that require immediate attention. I believe then that there are other locations in the city than the currently suggested location that better fit these requirements for the safety of everyone involved. In light of these facts, I would urge you once again to support Councilmember O'Brien's ordinance 3.31.20 requiring a 1,000-foot setback for this type of facility. Phoenix, Cleveland, and numerous other municipalities have required the same zoning provision. Why should Albany be any different? We've already read Vincent Raguso's comments, and for the record, these are a comment from my surgeon, and they read as follows. Thank you for your time, I have some housing questions. I would like to know, one, what the city of Albany plans on doing when temporary housing ends so that homeless individuals do not have to go back on the streets, living in cars, and back to congregate housing? Two, how will CARES housing funds be used to fund legal aid services for right to counsel for tenants due to confusion over federal, state, and court eviction processes and potential court backlog? Three, how will CARES HUD funding through the various funding sources, CBBG, ESG, HOP, WA, and home programs be used for the people who are suffering disproportionately now and will continue to do so in the recovery? What will we do differently? Just some thoughts, thank you for your time. Also, we have a comment from Steve Burke. He put his comment in writing, but I did promise Mr. Burke that I would call him and get him on the line, and he can share his comments. So if you bear with me one second, I will be bringing Mr. Burke on the line, Mr. President, if that's okay.
Okay.
Hello, Steve Burke.
Mr. Burke? Can you hear?
I can hear you very well, yes.
All right, I have you on the line so that you're able to share your comments, if you would do so, sir.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair? Can you hear me, Madam Clerk?
I can hear you. Mr. Burke, can you hear our president, President Ellis?
I can't. Thank you, yes.
Yes, Mr. Burke, you have five minutes to express your public comment.
Thank you, sir. I'll try to take less, and I really appreciate folks operating in this way to allow us to make our comments.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm grateful you're available to you. Primarily, what I'd like to do is strongly support both the amendment of the USDO, the amendment proposed by Councilman Tom Hawley, and also support your action to veto the mayor's veto itself, in other words, reinstate in previous move relative to con, excuse me, to the plasma center. In support of both of those positions, there's a common set of amendments that I posted very quickly. I'm working with residents in neighborhoods in fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, boards, and so many other wards in the city have the same issue, which is the residents have developed a very deep frustration as well as a very real sense of fear with the nature and the type of developments which the planning board and the city is pursuing recently, both including and are new to prove are very, very disconcerting for people. So the action that we're asking you folks to do as a council is extremely important, very, very important. I can't emphasize that enough. So this action that has emerged is a response to what I believe are ill-conceived, incompatible, irresponsible development proposals. In essence, the planning board now operates in the capacity of a development agency, not a planning agency. Residential input is ignored and dismissed. I don't make those as idle statements. I can back that up with hundreds of pages of material that has been provided over a series of developments in the last few years. But the two actions requested here would represent, if pleased that the council is so willing, essential first step in regaining the planning board, make it a planning board again, make it act like one to promote public confidence to seven points. Restoration of sound planning principles, incorporating the relevance of appropriate density and cost benefit ratios, implement the spirit and the letter of the USDO, both of those. Number four would be comply with existing county agreements and planning inputs. Five, comply with New York state regulations, which have been ignored, including secret DC building codes, fire code, PFC utility regulations that goes on and on. Number six, comply with the federal regulations, and lastly, the international fire and building codes. So there's a wide array of existing regulations that are supposed to regulate and control the type of development in neighborhoods that are all being ignored. So in summary, right now, the residents really have to rely on you folks on the council to seek a better balance, because these matters are truly of great importance. Council's health is essential, and it's imperative that only responsible developments, not against development, but responsible ones, which are those that are compatible with existing neighborhoods, the existing designation of commercial zones, incorporate legitimate views of the impact of residents, which are being ignored now, and are economically self-sufficient. What will happen with these is the true costs are not recognized. They will cost this city, they will cost taxpayers, they will cost the residents, and we're being asked to accept those even though we don't like them, we'll have them, and we'll have to pay for them if responsible action is not taken. So thank you so much for listening to that. I really appreciate this opportunity. Thanks, thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, sir.
Is there another?
That's everyone that I have for public comment for this evening.
Thank you. So that will deem this period of public comment period close at this time. And do we have any approval of minutes, Mr. Kimbrough?
He's muted. Bear with us one second.
Mr. Flynn, you have a question?
That's out of.
Okay, you gotta hold it.
Out of order, yes.
Okay, yes.
All right.
Mo.
Kelly. No.
We're out. Indeed, we can see you, Jack, but you're out of order. We're on the approval of minutes, of last week's minutes. Go ahead, Mr.
Okay, motion to approve the May 4, 2020, meeting minutes.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes approved. Moving on to local laws. Moving on to the agenda of the local laws, Ms. Fredericks.
Mr. President, I noticed local law effect of 2020 and asked for its passage with a roll call vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
Yes, Mr. President, a local law amending Article sixteen of Chapter 333 of the Code.
Is there any discussion on the local law?
Councilmember Frederick has some.
Councilmember Frederick?
Thank you. So this local law will provide a first-time homebuyer's tax exemption to city residents in accordance with state legislation. As you know, this was in place by prior councils, and it did sunset in 2016. What this will do is we will provide a great incentive to first-time homebuyers to construct new property on vacant lots, essentially providing a five-year real property tax exemption, starting at 50% and tearing down 10%, ultimately getting them back to normal property tax. We did receive a estimate from our city treasurer during the finance committee meeting, and he said that it would have a net zero fiscal impact, which is very important, especially given the current situation with the city budget and pandemic. So I thank you all for your support, and I hope that you all vote for this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
If you could just bear with us a couple seconds to unmute all participants. It appears everyone is unmuted. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahey?
Co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes.
Hawley?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Inbro?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Correct?
He's still muted.
Go ahead. We couldn't hear you, for the record.
Under consideration of vetoes on the agenda, correct? That's where we are, Mr. President?
Yes, holding all, holding all local laws, yes.
Okay.
Consideration of vetoes.
Okay, I move to reconsider ordinance three thirty-one twenty-one, M.C. Notwithstanding Mayor Sheehan's objections, and ask for a roll call vote thereon.
Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
Muted.
Yes, President, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
An ordinance amending paragraph B of paragraph C of Part Three of Chapter 375 and Part Six of Chapter 375 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the operation of blood plasma centers.
Is there any discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
Our, this is matter has been around for over three years. It was in November, December of 2017 that the planning director sent us the first copy of an ordinance regulating blood plasma centers, and it had a separation of 1,000 feet from residential and, and other churches, schools, parks. So it's nothing new. It's taken a rather unusual process. It stayed with the planning department for a very long time. The planning department basically sent it to the city, then sent it to the council in 2018. And at a point, the council tabled the consideration of it while it was still in front of the BCA, which basically denied use of the property pursuant to the planning director's instruction that it required its own law that our ordinance never contemplated, the blood plasma center. It took on a, it was the version that the planning board sent us was tabled. I wrote this version back late last summer. It went to the planning committee. It went to the planning department. The planning department never acted on it. I asked for a vote to pull it out of committee. It was voted on in the winter, and it passed. At that point, the mayor raised some objections, and in the view of our council, we addressed all of her legitimate concerns and again voted on a different numbered ordinance, but basically the same ordinance. So the mayor's reading many of those in her veto message. I think our council has quite thoroughly addressed the mayor's argument that there was a rash lack of rational basis on the law. There was a rational basis, as discussed in, in our various meetings. The other issue, the mayor said it was retroactive zoning. First, our ordinance does not impact the case law. She recited was one that had a statute of limitations. We didn't impact any of that. No one has a vested right yet. The, so there is no substantive right that will be, you know, inappropriately denied. The applicant has not obtained its approval. The approval will be, the approval or lack thereof will be based on the existing law when the planning board gets around to making any decision on this. And the existing law, I, I hope, with an override, would be the setbacks and the requirements in, in this ordinance. I did want to address a little bit, there was an, an issue. The mayor stated there's a conflict of interest between me as the author and my role as councilman and a private court action that six residents, including myself, the city of Albany, brought against the zoning board, challenging their interpretation of blood plasma as light manufacturing. I have been in contact with a number of people, and I do not view my actions as in any way a conflict of interest. I have absolutely no financial interest in CSL, Hannaford Plaza, Nigro Realty, or any of the competitors. So I think the issue of an alleged conflict of interest is a red herring. And then finally, and I think this is one of the most important points, the mayor argues that the council cannot act to change anything in the USDO without the explicit approval of the planning department and planning board. That, I believe, is not true. She cites in her veto message various number of paragraphs out of Section 375 dash five E of the ordinance. Most of the sites that she gave do not deal with seeking to amend the ordinance. They deal with the process of approvals when an applicant applies for a development plan. So we can discount those. She cites one section. She cites Section E 24B and reads it to equate the council as a city agency. That section requires a city agency if they seek a change in the zoning code to go through the planning director. That is a mistake in reading and directly contradicts the very next paragraph, E 24C, which clearly states that the common council has to describe the legislative discretion to amend the USDO, exactly what the charter, the city charter says, that we have that discretion. Even if we wanted to, we could not hand over that discretion to the planning board. And in fact, we consciously, when we passed this USDO back in October of 2017, never intended to hand that authority over to the planning director, to the planning board, such that we have to get their absolute permission. We'd be happy to hear from them, but that is a misreading of the USDO, which affects not only this ordinance, but will affect so many other attempts of the council to tweak, to make changes to the USDO well into the future. So I would ask that we submit an override to the, to the mayor. I wanted to do, wanted to note two, two other things. The mayor says it leaves only a handful of places for a blood plasma clinic to go. That isn't true. The planning department said that it leaves 106 sites within the city of Albany, which I regard as more than a handful. And one other point I wanted to, Katina Mavadones made in her public comments, and she sent me the link, which I will send to all the council members, as well as to Alana Klein for the subject, listing all of the approved facilities for what they call convalescent plasma. That is the situation where somebody has had COVID-19, developed an antibody, and wants to donate their plasma for the sake of somebody else acquiring that COVID antibody. And CSL is not listed among that list, despite what we may have been led to believe. So that's all I have to say. I think there's more than enough reason for overriding the mayor's veto, and I think it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, President, we're going to unmute everyone and call the roll momentarily.
I have something to say.
Oh, I can't see you. Okay, go. I think, go ahead, Mr. Anani.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I stand with Mike O'Brien with his sentiments as it relates to the thousand-foot setback, but I'm going to speak a little bit more about our role and also what has happened as it relates to this vote and why we're here in the first place. I will vote to override the mayor's veto on this matter. I think it's important for the council to demonstrate our role as an independent branch of city government. Here we have an instance where the council has overwhelmingly voted on a piece of legislation, and the majority of our constituents have indicated that they support this legislation. Nevertheless, the mayor vetoed this legislation. We, as a council, reviewed the mayor's concerns. We brought those concerns back to our constituents. We felt that the mayor's concerns We felt that the mayor's concerns, while valid, did not justify us not respecting the wishes of our constituents. As a councilman who represents, who try and implement, try to be an independent voice for the community and to represent their interests, I don't see any other choice but to vote to override the mayor's veto decision. This should not come as a, this should not be viewed as a relationship between the council or the mayor is going as a struggle or frame. It's anything but, given that this council and the mayor have worked together over the past three years to pass laws, bonds, that benefit the city of Albany as a whole. And I hope that we will continue to do that. However, there will be times where this body will have to disagreements with the mayor. And in those instances, we shall let one side dictate new laws and new policies by default. Mr. President, there's a reason why sixteen eighty-six Thomas Donigan allowed the council to override vetoes, and this action is appropriate, given the disagreement on this issue. On a personal note, as I like to remind, remind my colleagues and other people in the city, I didn't come here to go along to get along. I came here to make a difference, to speak truth to power, and to fight for those whose concerns have been swept under the rug. I want to thank the sponsor, Mike O'Brien, for his work on this legislation. I also want to thank our research council for his independent legal interpretation on this matter. And lastly, to the attorneys representing the blood plasma and any city department official who don't understand our role as a council. Well, let me sum it up. Albany Charter states that the legislative power of the city is vested in the common council, which shall be authorized to adopt, amend, or repeal local laws, ordinance, resolutions, and rules and regulations in the exercise of its function. It's also in our power and duties to pay into the property affairs or government and city matters. And I just want to be clear, for those who are not familiar with our role, we don't work for the administration, all right? We work for our constituents. It's in our charter to serve as a checks and balance to the executive branch. And quite frankly, for those who are not familiar, now you know. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor to override this veto. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Can the clerk please call the roll? Oh, hold on, Mr. Baller has his hand up. Mr. Baller?
I just want-
Thank you for using the, thank you using for the hand thing so I could see it. Go ahead.
I just want to thank Councilman O'Brien. I know this has been a long process. I know that this has gone through several different committees. Remember, two and a half years ago, when they went to the planning board the first time and the decisions that were held there? I feel comfortable with this because the planning board, the planning board had an opportunity to review it, and they did. And they, recommendation of five hundred feet. It may be different in the, in the recommendation of how many feet. The recommendation stating that there should be, there should be some type of foot distance between residential properties and these type of facilities. They all, in the discussion that they had before they made that decision, were discussing possibly even having a footage, a location between these type of facilities. So they were very well aware of how this will affect different communities in our city. And they agreed with the fact that there should be some type of limitation on these properties regarding how close they are to other, other homes and, and schools and churches. So I feel comfortable with the decision we're moving forward. I want to echo some of the comments that were spoken by the, just because we have a different opinion with the mayor on zoning policy does not mean we are not a one united city when it comes to fighting for our state resources and fighting for our fair share of our federal resources. So let, let that, let this not be some type of opportunity to create a wedge. Yes, we're going to have differences. That's what democracy is about. It's about having differences. It's about having debate. It's about having discussions. And then when you have those differences, you, you work with them out. And then you, you have situations like this where you couldn't work them out, and you have two different sets of government moving forward. So I am united, I know we're united with, with, with our mayor when it comes to fighting for our resources. This is a difference of opinion when it comes to zoning. And I, I commend Councilman O'Brien for pushing forward this through a long process. But I appreciate your, your hard fight.
Thank you, Mr. Baller. Mr. Howie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to express my thanks to Mike O'Brien for sticking with this. It was a very difficult road, and I think we're almost at the end of it. And I'm very proud of this council today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. So you know, there, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, we're going to start unmuting folks. All right, Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Baller?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Doshet?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson? Mr. Johnson, was that a yes and a co-sponsor?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbra?
Yes.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. That is two-thirds of the council, so veto is overridden. Moving on to reports of standing committees, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, I think, May fourteenth?
Yes.
And we discussed local law that we passed, just passed. We also discussed ordinance four point four one point two zero. Love and ordinance to authorize a sale to Legal Aid Society of sixty-nine Sherman Street, which passed through the committee with a positive recommendation. We also discussed ordinance five point four one point two zero and ordinance Love to sell land along Von Trump Street, two thirty-third Columbia Street, which passed through the committee with a positive recommendation. And we also discussed or, a resolution twenty-nine point four one point two zero, R. Farrell, a resolution affirming the manner in which Albany gives real property tax exemptions to veterans and calling on the state legislature to bring statewide veterans' exemptions in line with the city of Albany's practice, which passed with a positive recommendation. We also had a discussion on, on the current budget status and what was happening. And that was our meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Is there any other reports of standing committees? Mr. Kimbra?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, the twentieth of May to, with the Chief of Police to discuss updates on recent gun violence, the Albany Police Department's response, and this New York on pause. And also grills and fire pits and a recent complaint about fireworks. We'll be discussing that at the Public Safety meeting.
Thank you. Any more reports standing committees? Seeing none, we're going to move to consider-
Whoa, 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 wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Shea? Mr. Shea, I can't see you. So if we please, if we can use in the participants, participant box, just raise your hand so I can see that you raised your hand.
I, I apologize.
But go ahead, Ms. Ms. Shea, no problem.
Yeah, I apologize. The thing is, it requires like two or three steps to get to where you raise your hand.
Gotcha.
And, and it's kind of like getting on the elevator, you hit the wrong button.
You're really, well, thank you for shouting out, but go ahead. It's okay.
So the Housing and Community Development Committee met on May eleventh with two main topics on the agenda. We had Ms. Andrews in to talk about the supplemental COVID funding that we're getting under the CARES Act, the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, specifically to help address some of the challenges of COVID nineteen. It's not specific to help with city budgets, that's a different issue. And she had done a survey, she shared the results of the survey, online survey with us, people's concerns and, and thoughts about priority funding should be for elderly, low-income, people with small children. And we talked about a variety of services that we would be looking to provide. There's also a separate part of funding for, to help with housing and homelessness that we talked about. There was a robust discussion, and she is going to be developing an RFP for community organizations to apply for funding to help with various programming to help people who are very challenged by the current circumstances. We also had Steve Longo come in from the exec, he's the executive director of the Albany Housing Authority, to talk about the impact of COVID nineteen on the housing authority, its finances, and also on residents. And there was very positive report from him. I, I think most of us were surprised and encouraged by how the housing authority is responding to the challenges, how residents, that they are not seeing a significant decrease yet in terms of receipts, income receipts. And I'm very pleased that they were also in the process of mailing out masks to everybody who rents through the Albany Housing Authority and is eligible for section eight housing. So we look forward to continuing to work with, especially Faye Andrews, on the next steps.
Thank you so much. So since there's no other standing committees, moving on to considerations of ordinances and ordinances held, Ms. Love?
This ordinance four point forty-one point twenty and asks for his passes.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President, an ordinance of the common council authorizing the sale to the Legal Aid Society of Northeastern New York of city-owned land at sixty-nine Sherman Street.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, we are unmuting all of the common council members. Anani?
Yes.
Baller?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Doshet?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, and co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Ordin, ordinance passes. Ms. Love?
For his passes.
Say that again, Ms. Love, we couldn't hear, I mean you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance five point forty-one point twenty and asks for his passes.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the common council authorizing the sale to thirty-third Columbia Street Associate LLC of city-owned land along Van Trump Street.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. President, Mr. Anani's hand went up. I don't know.
Okay, I can't see him. Go ahead.
I heard that, Richard. Thank you very much.
That wasn't me, I didn't say anything.
That was not Richard, but go ahead, Mr. Anani.
I, I accept your apology, though.
I, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this won't come as a surprise, as I have expressed some concerns as it relates to this sale. You know, it, it is my understanding that we're looking to, we're expecting twenty-five thousand dollars for this sale of this land and to allow a developer to build in a commercial parking lot. Quite frankly, this is a relatively low amount, considering the amount of business activity and traffic in the downtown area. And I'd like to thank, you know, the leadership in City Hall and also some of my council colleagues and, you know, the downtown bit that have worked very hard over the past couple of years to make sure that Pearl Street and the Broadway in the downtown district have become very attractive to individuals that want to invest in those neighborhoods and invest in that corridor. And moving forward, we're going to have projects in that area that's going to include development of the Skyway Project. We have witnessed in the past several months, and also moving forward, where entrepreneurs and realtors are investing in that location. With the city of Albany facing unprecedented budget deficit, it does not make the city to be selling land at a discounted price to a commercial developer. I think that we need every single dollar that we could get for any type of sale moving forward, looking at our financial health. And moving forward, I just hope that we could sometimes bring the appraisers in and interrogate the decisions and how they came up with that number of twenty-five thousand or whatever the number is moving forward. You know, a friend once said, "Don't make perfect the enemy of good." And I totally understand that. And, you know, as much as I don't want to, I will be voting in favor for this sale because, again, twenty-five thousand dollars now is better than not receiving anything. But moving forward, I hope that we will give some of these sales the due diligence that it, it needs.
Mr. Baller?
I just want to follow up on what I spoke about at caucus. I do think we will, we rely heavily on these appraisals. And this is not the first time we've had questions about an appraisal in, in interactive of selling a property. So I do want to recommend to corporate counsel that we go out and get our own appraisal, our own appraisal company that we work with, that we know has our best interest and have whoever's interested in purchasing a property have then paid for the appraisal. I think that will help ease some of the concerns that I've heard on, on this ish, on this piece of property, but on others as well. And we, we rely heavily on these appraisals. We need to know that we can trust them and feel comfortable with them. So that we know we're making sure, no matter what our financial status is, where we are, you know, surplusing and, and, and bursting out the, out the bubble, or whether we are in difficult times, we should make sure we're getting the best price for every property that we sell. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk- Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm just unmuting. Anani?
I think there's something wrong with my-
We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Baller?
Boy.
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dusha?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Mr. Kimbra?
Rest of the ordinances on the agenda are hold.
Thank you. Now, moving on to resolutions introduced. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution 445220R, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to pass, and the governor to sign legislation automatically classifying the deaths of all municipal employees who die from COVID-19 as line of duty deaths.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbra?
That'll be a hold.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's all moving on to resolutions held. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution Number 29.41.20R, and ask for its passage and a roll call, roll call, roll call vote there.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Mr. President, a resolution affirming the manner in which the City of Albany the veterans, and calling on the state legislature to bring the statewide veterans exemption in line with the City of Albany's practice.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Trey Kingston for bringing this to our attention and for working with us to find a way that we can continue to offer this exemption to our constituents. It's something that we've been doing, and it's also, they're an important part of our community and important to support them. So thank you very much for everybody's support on this, and that's it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. President, Mr. Anani had his hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Anani.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the sponsor for this resolution. I think it's important that we recognize the men and women who put their life on the line to make sure that all of us are safe. And I firmly believe, as much as people think that the federal government and the state is the sole responsibility for making sure that our veterans are taken care of, I think there's more that we could do on the local and county level to make sure that our reverence are appreciated, and also to let them know that we see them. If there's any way that we can help them to maximize it. So again, I want to thank the sponsor. These are our friends. These are our neighbors, and we have to make sure that they're not forgotten.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Seeing no other hands, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Baller?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes.
Dusha?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy? Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbra?
There are no other resolutions on the-
Okay.
After that one.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Conti has his hand.
Yep, Mr. Conti. You miscellaneous or unfinished business, Mr. Conti?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just want to note that this, this meeting is the one where, which ordinarily, in normal times, would have been our youth in government night, when we invite students from local high school to join us and to sit with us and maybe learn a little bit about local government and encourage their participation in government and public service. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that this year. Hopefully, things next year will return to normalcy. But also want to note, this is also the time when our seniors, our high school seniors are graduating, and I think it's probably appropriate that we might want to give them a round of applause for the work they've done and are, as an expression of our best wishes for their future in these difficult times. So if it's appropriate, if we can do that.
I believe it's more inappropriate, Mr. Conti.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Conti.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Igo?
Yep, there we go.
Yes, I want to let Mr. Kelly know I will not be attending the public safety meeting Wednesday night. Unfortunately, I need two root canals, and I had a cancellation. I can get one done Wednesday. I can't wait to get it over with.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Igo. I tell you, I love him to death. Nothing being said, Mr. Kimbra?
There's Mr. Anani has his hand up.
Mr. Anani?
Yeah, I just want to-
Can you please use the participant bar so I can see you when your hand goes up?
I actually did for the first time.
Go ahead.
Gotcha. No, I just want to commend the First Ward Councilwoman Sonia Frederick on our first piece of legislation being introduced. I think it's important that when you look at housing issues or even opportunity to help individual first-time homebuyers, that we maximize it. So I just want to, you know, recognize the First Ward Councilwoman on introducing our first piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Mr. Kimbra?
Yes, Ms. Frederick, correct. I guess there's no further business motion to adjourn.
Second? There's a second? Mr. Igo, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
All right. Everyone be safe.
Have a good night, everybody.